I've been given the privilege of opening up because you're now standing in the 70th Assembly District Part A. So let's give it up for Part A. Welcome. Now actually, I've been giving, I thank Keith Lilly for this opportunity. I'm District Leader William Allen. We're part of Bill Perkins, colleagues of district leaders. The wind behind his wings at this part of town, so we just want to just welcome you from Part A. Now I'm gonna turn the mic over to Ernestine Bell Temple from the 71st Assembly District.
Thank you everyone for this opportunity. Welcome. I'm Ernestine Bell Temple from the 71st Assembly District Part B. Honored, we're gonna get this party started very shortly. And thank you for all the honorees and the work they've done and will continue to do in Harlem. Thank you.
Good evening everybody. My name is LaShawn Henry. I am running for district leader in the 68th District. And I would like to welcome everyone here tonight, all the honorees, all the guests. And I want to thank you on behalf of myself and of course, our councilman, Bill Perkins. Thank you.
Keith Lilly to the mic.
Thank you. What's up everybody? Good evening. I just want to add a side note, LaShawn Henry is running with me as my new co-leader. So please remember LaShawn Henry for district leader, 68th Assembly District Part D. Let's give it up for Councilman Bill Perkins. Thank you so much for coming out. So tonight is a very exciting and special night. This is the first annual Hope Awards. We are honoring some fantastic Harlemites, some fantastic people who represent this community. 120% of their time, every day of the week. We really appreciate them and Bill Perkins decided that it was very important to honor, to continue honoring folks in this community, the unsung heroes and sheroes of this community. Yes, give them more glory. So again, tonight is a special night. Thank you so much for coming out, supporting the campaign, supporting the honorees. As you see around you, the room is crowded. And we really, really appreciate those folks who have been doing some amazing work in the community. Now, on another note, everybody, all the honorees, everybody didn't submit their bios. So me and Manny, Manny come up here. Me and Manny's gonna have to wing introducing some folks. But you know the great part, you know the great part of that? Even though they didn't submit a bio, their work is, their work is so exceptional that they're worthy and you just know them and you can say a whole bunch of stuff without having to read their bio. And so, that's a great thing. So we're gonna begin the program. I hope all the honorees are here. I see Cicely and Danine and Charles and who else? We're pastor, we're pastor, Dr. Ramos. Where Dr. Ramos at? Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna start the program. We're gonna introduce the honorees, our guests. Once we introduce you, you come up, say a few words, take a photo out with the councilman. Well, I think they paid already. And thank you so much for that. We really appreciate that. Just on another note before we begin. Before we begin, I just want to update folks about the campaign. The campaign is going great. We're doing some great stuff. Thank you. I wanna, I wanna thank a lot of folks in this room, everybody in this room, for doing what you do to make this campaign a success. Right now, today is the first day to submit petitions. We've gathered over 8,000 signatures from the community, which included clubs like William Allen's, Ernestine Temple, Keith Wright, Annette Dickens. All came together to support Bill Perkins and getting enough signatures to put him on the ballot for September primary. Yes, and I gotta mention my own club, Sojourner Truth Democratic Club. 3,200 signatures. Thank you. So, and that also include outside of the clubs participated. There was folks, just ordinary folks that walked into the campaign, took one sheet, two sheets, just to go out and get signatures because they believed in the candidate. And we really appreciated those folks as well. So thank you to you all and those who are not here. Manny, you wanna start off with your first award? Everybody know Manny? Manny, if you don't know Manny... You better know Manny. Manny's a troublemaker. But you know what? He's a good troublemaker. He's Bill Perkins' troublemaker. He's Robert Jackson's troublemaker. He's Shaw Shaw the troublemaker. He's my troublemaker. And so, we all know, in the family, we have our troublemakers and we call them our own. So thank you for being a troublemaker, man. So let me introduce Manny. He's gonna introduce the first award to Danine Blackman.
So, when we were getting together to do the awards, the councilman told me and Keith, he said, "Listen, do not go on and give long bios to people. What I want you to do, say one or two things, sentences that you know, and then let them talk about their confidence, their vision." This is their time to talk about what they believe, what they want, and I want to hear what everybody else thinks. So I'm not gonna go through a long bio. Now, with this, Danine Brown Blackman, someone came up to us and asked, "Could they make this presentation?" And we said yes. So I'd like to introduce someone who has asked to make this presentation to Danine Brown Blackman, Andrew LaSalle, who's the district manager of Community Board 10.
Thank you Manny. Thank you Councilman Perkins. I think you chose exceptional people. One exceptional person I have to talk about. So, as you know, I'm the district manager of Community Board 10. But here, today, I'm not here as district manager, but I'm here as a friend. Cause this person's a friend to me. And also, I'm here as someone like a son. Cause this lady has been like a mother to me. So... This lady is really so amazing. She's the kind of person that deserves so many awards. When you look at the award, it says Harlem's outstanding people of excellence. And Danine Brown Blackman is truly an outstanding person of excellence. Just so you know, on the board, Danine serves as the chair of Personnel Committee. So, she's there with me every day, helping me out with things in the office, helping with me in personal life. And that's really the kind of person she is. Whether she just met you on the street or whether she's known you for 10 years, Danine is always willing to sacrifice her time and her efforts and whatever she's doing to help the person out. So it's really, this award is just a little token of the appreciation, all the amazing work Danine has done and just the amazing kind of person she is. So without further ado, I want everyone to help me welcome up Danine Brown Blackman.
Well, that was a treat. Thank you very much. And I would also like to thank the councilman staff for doing an excellent job. And I really was surprised. I really don't need an award for the work that I do. Because I do this because I love doing what I do. But the reason why this award is so special to me is because the councilman, in 2006, I gave my mother a celebration to Life Party. And he came, he was like, "Well, let me see what this girl's gonna do for her mother." I don't think you ever experienced that before, cause that was pretty new. So he comes. He looks at my mother and he says, "This woman is your mother?" And I said, "Yes." And he said it again, "Is this lady your mother?" And I said, "Yes, this is my mother." He said, "Do you know that this woman helped me with my campaign when I was running for city council?" And as I said to you, my mother was transitioning into a new life. So, but that day, he gave my mother life. Cause at that party, she started walking around, talking. She was only supposed to be there for an hour. She was there for four hours. But I never got the opportunity to tell you this story or to thank you for giving me my mother for that one day. So that's why this award is so special. Because you're not looking for anybody to give you anything. But I told you, he gave me my mother. And she gave me, he gave me the opportunity for my mother to say, "Look what I did. You weren't the only one who was in politics." So that's why this award is so special for me, because I'm going to accept it on behalf of my mother. And you, you don't have to know anybody. You come and you go. You go to everybody's events and you make people feel good. And that's what this award is all about, making me feel good about what I do. Like I said, what I'd love to do, what I'm gonna continue to do, but to thank you for recognizing me. And I appreciate all of you and all the honorees that are here. But my staff is here, my deputy commissioner, Mr. Woody Pascal. And all my family is here. And I appreciate you all for coming. And thank you Manny. And thank you councilman. And thank you Andrew.
Another round of applause, Danine Brown Blackman. Yes. The next honoree is a legend. Seriously, he's a legend. But I won't go deep into his bio because I'm gonna have another legend come up and introduce this legend. Freddie Crawford, come up and introduce your good friend Bob McCullough. Freddie Crawford, Crawford, New York Knicks. Can we get some quiet, please? This is very important. Freddie Crawford, former New York Knicks, legend, young man. Introducing Bob McCullough, our next honoree.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce my partner in crime. He's got a list of things he's done in terms of the community. Each one teach one and raising funds. He introduced me earlier to one of the young ladies that was in the CEOP program when he was a counselor there. So, I, Bob, I just got to, coming back from South Carolina. He was inducted into the South Carolina Hall of Fame. And a million other Hall of Fames, Bob. So, you know, on my behalf, man, it's been an opportunity for me, working with you, you know, we Batman and Robin. Every time there's, every time people wanna do something and they can't find Bob, they come and try and find me. Ernestine, the councilman, we all been working together, Bob. You've done a wonderful job. Saved so many young people. And so, it's on my behalf and I'm sure on the community's behalf, thanks for all the good work, man. And stay healthy and stay around.
Give Bob McCullough a legend. A round of applause. I love this guy.
Well, can I have everybody's attention, please? I know that you guys are very anxious back there to have very important conversations with each other. However, you know, this is an award ceremony and each person that come up here deserve your attention because they have done something special. Now, what I want you to know is that this is my 50th year with Each One Teach One, which is known all over the country as a youth developmental and mentoring program. There are 37 Each One Teach One programs throughout the United States. However, we were the first ones to be registered with the United States government for agriculture, for inventions and design. So, when I go to different conventions in Los Angeles or in New Orleans, people ask me, "Why do I allow the other Each One Teach One programs to exist?" And I say this. They're not doing any harm to our community. They're not advertising negative pictures or posters on their t-shirts about women as they used to do, if you remember, on 125th Street. Okay? If you remember, if you can remember back then, they were selling t-shirts, which was negative towards women. So, I say, as long as they're not doing anything like that, they're making a contribution to our society, I do not feel that we should tell them to cease to exist because of the fact that they're trying to do something in their community, whether it's in Florida, whether it's in Texas, whether it's in Ohio. They are doing something and they are dumping the name because they like the name. So we do not bother them. But what I want you to know is that the NBA Players Association gave us a $30,000 grant to run our program this year. We have some NBA stars that will be coming to give clinics to the kids. And one of them is a young white girl who was in the program, who testifies on television that we did not discriminate against color. When she was 15 years old, she came up from Queens and played. Her name is Nancy Lieberman. She is the first female that is the assistant coach in the National Basketball Association. She's coming up. And she's bringing her son. Her son is 6'6". She's bringing her son with her. And she wants to give a dribbling clinic and she wanna give a passing clinic. And we also have Ron Strickland that's gonna give a clinic. And Kenny Anderson that's gonna give a clinic. So, we are celebrating our 50th anniversary to have people. We're gonna ask Freddie Crawford if he could contact the retired Players Association to see if they can send somebody up. Because we're making this a festival. And we need all of your help. And that's the reason why I'm saying this. But I cannot leave this podium without telling you that there was an historic event that happened two years ago when the former senator, Bill Perkins, invited Freddie Crawford and I up to the senatorial chambers in New York State and presented what we do in the Rucker Tournament on the floor of the Senate. And not only did he introduce us, but there was another senator that got up and testified about what we do in Harlem. And they gave us a standing ovation and they took pictures. And the senator told us that very, very rarely do they allow anybody on the floor of the Senate. But we were there. So I just wanna take this opportunity to thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank everybody here. Thank you.
Photo out? Be real green. You see how green Bob was? So please, I, thank you.
This next, this next young lady has a very career. She is a prosecutor, assistant district attorney in the Bronx. And she has also taken on a huge task as the newly chosen chairperson of Community Board 10, which everyone has says is probably one of the most complex boards within the city because we are in an area that is very complex and changing. So, I think everyone was really happy, the councilman and all the other elected officials and her colleagues, that we in Harlem have, were able to obtain somebody like Cicely Harris to take over that. Cicely Harris, Chairperson, Community Board 10.
Thank you Manny. Thank you Councilman Perkins. Thank you for this award. And may I also congratulate you and thank you for your over 20 years of service to this community. I see your spirit, your fortitude, and know that real community service does not come from positions that you hold because you can hold many positions. But it comes from the sheer will to stay involved no matter what. To always want something more for others than you want for yourself. And for that, I say, thank you. Standing here today, being counted among these lovely honorees, I am grateful to be mentioned among you. And I am in awe of all the wonderful things that you do. With this great honor, I am even more encouraged and realize the increased responsibility that is and should be expected of me. I use this as a springboard, one to say thank you for appreciating me and to ask you what more I can do for you and what more I can do for the community. Using the people around me, Councilman Perkins, Manny, John, many of you, you wonderful people here tonight and in the community as guides and role models, I can strive even more to make a difference. Thank you.
Our next honoree brings back the word cool in my mind. He's a businessman in this community, owns property, he gives back to this community. He's a great, great guy. When you see him in the streets stepping out of his car, all you see is cool. I'd like to bring up our friend, Mr. Sam Harverson. Come on Sam. The owner of Paris Blues. If you haven't been to Paris Blues, you gotta go there. Battle this flop. Look at that man. Cool.
Just wanna say thank you, and you, and you. And I got another message here.
Sam just announced that all the honorees should come over to Paris Blues and have a free drink on him. So make sure you go and get an old time drink. Thank you Sam. Give it up for Sam Harverson. Thank you Sam. How many in here like to read books, love to read books? Who love to read books? Who send their kids to the library? Well, we got one of the baddest librarians in Harlem today, Donna Murphy. Let me tell you. Donna has given back to this community time and time again. My club along with Councilman Perkins appreciates every year that she allows us to come into her space and hold Kwanzaa Celebration for the children. She never hesitates to say no. She always saying yes. We love her to death. She's a great, great librarian. Cause she's not only in the library, but she takes us up to the streets. And we appreciate you Donna. Come up and say a few words. Give her a hand.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm gonna make a brief and quick, as you guys said. I would like to say thank you to, where is he? We're with Mr. Andrew LaSalle. He's the one who nominated me. And I wouldn't be here without the New York Public Library or my parents who are here today. Oh, that's my mom right here and my dad. And if you know Caribbean parents, you know, they push you to do what you love and what you need to do. And I love giving back to the community. And that's why I'm the library manager at Harlem Library. And I really do appreciate Keith coming to me every once in a while. And I don't say yes unless, I don't say no unless I truly have to say no. But usually, I'm like, yes. I will definitely help you. The library's here for everybody. And I'll say thank you, Chairperson, for this honoree and all of us.
So our next honoree, you know, I know everybody in here goes to church. So we're gonna have to stand up when she comes up to the podium. Apostle Dr. Stacy Ramos. Fire. Let me tell you. You know, she's done great, she has done great work in this community and continue to do great work in this community. She has ownership of some property where she gives to truly affordable units in her building, where we're being gentrified out. She's saving affordable housing. She's a pastor. She's ahead of her church. We love her. She's always in the streets. I can go on and on and on. But Dr. Ramos stopped me and said, "Could y'all pray?" And I said, "No, we didn't pray." So she probably gonna come up here and say a little prayer. So bear with her. Let's give it up for Dr. Ramos.
Okay, so I'm so excited. And I'm not only excited for me, but I'm excited for community. Can somebody just agree with me that we are excited for community? I just wanna say thank you. I'm definitely gonna give a little word of prayer, but I definitely wanted to just say, thank you, thank you, thank you. So before I say anything else, and I will be brief. I want to just thank the great Creator, God Almighty, amen? I just need somebody to be able to know that the reason why you are breathing right now was not by yourself. And I want you to understand that. So no one came up to pray, and that's not a bad thing. I'm here, so I would like to pray. So as Keith Lilly said, if you bear with me, please. But go ahead, Spout. So, as Keith Lilly said, if you bear with me, please, but go ahead, Spout, my heart's ready to receive. Most gracious and honorable Lord, we thank you, we thank you for this day, we thank you for community, we thank you for leadership, we thank you for honor, for it is you who says to give honor where honor is due. We ask that you continue to grace us with your blessings, we ask that you keep this community as you always have and as you always will, not only this community, but the nation in a whole. We pray out to you, we seek you, we thank you for all that you've done and all that you're going to continue to do and your matchless name we pray, amen? Amen, amen. I wanted to say, I wanna thank Councilman Bill Perkins. I need to be, no, 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 we're gonna all come together on that. I wanna thank Councilman Bill Perkins. Now, come on, let's give him a great, great, great. We're here for honorees, we're here for ourselves, but this would not have happened if it wasn't for the councilman, if it wasn't for all the leadership that works alongside the councilman, including Keith Lilly, somebody bless God for Keith Lilly. But, Councilman Perkins has been doing a mighty work in the community. I know from Mr. Clyde Cook, I know from so many names that I could go on and on right now, but he's always there, like one of the honorees said earlier, he's always involved. This is not just talk. I'll wait a second.
Quiet please, quiet.
This is not just talk. I had a honoring the name of the building across the street as Keith Lilly mentioned and the councilman was there. Whenever we have anything that has to do with the people in this community, the councilman is there. He is there, he will talk to you. Now, everybody knows, he don't take no stop, so, so you know, he'll tell you like it is, but he means well, his heart is huge and I just wanted for us to take a moment and just really give a really strong, great clap for him because he does a lot. Can we just do that? Yes. With that being said, thank you so much for this, it was an honor. I have my family, I have some church members, I have fellowship, I have the bishop and I also have all of you. The church is right across the street, you're always welcome to come and fellowship right on 121st Street. Thank you so much, God bless you. Mr. Sam, Mr. Sam, I see you.
So, our next honoree does a few things, but one of the things he's involved with is he is a member of a coalition that I'm also involved in with, with Black and Latino LGBT organizations and leaders. And he's been involved in that coalition since it started about two years ago and it's funny because in that coalition, when it came up to a discussion about Bill Perkins and endorsing him for council, somebody stood up, Richard, you probably remember this, somebody stood up and said, "I'm not for Bill Perkins only because of his right in an LGBT community," which he was the only one for 20 years, 20, 30 years ago that stood up for LGBT rights when it wasn't popular. "I'm for Bill Perkins because he stood up for the Harlem Five." He said, "That's why I'm for Bill Perkins." He said, "Imagine, he said, imagine how terrified those young boys were when you had the entire city of New York and a multimillionaire taking ads in the paper, talking about electrocuting them and do all types of stuff." And he reminded us in that room, he said, "Bill Perkins was the only person that stood up and defended those kids." So, he said, "I'm for Bill Perkins because of the stand he took in the LGBT community, but I'm for Bill Perkins for the stand he took for our own community, our own community that includes the LGBT community." And Richard Pelsa is, is, excuse me, Charles Shorter is vindicative of that, can't use these big words, right? In addition to his role as a leading member of our New York Equality Coalition, which is a coalition of all the LGBT Black and Latino groups in the city, he is also the executive director of the Ryan White Health Center, which provides outstanding health care for the people in Harlem and has made a name, particularly providing HIV AIDS treatment. He is a real soldier, respected, Charles Shorter.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Perkins, thank you for always being there for us. Hope Awards Committee and fellow award honorees, I'm humbled by this award and thank you for this honor. I would also like to personally thank Brian McEnno, the president and CEO of the William F. Ryan Community Health Network and our board chair, Ronald Guy. I'd also like to thank my fellow colleagues, friends, community partners for the tremendous work that they do. Special shout out to big leaders of African descent, Harlem Advocates for Seniors and NYC Equality Coalition. Whether it be LGBT communities, people affected, affected by HIV AIDS or seniors who are trying to age in place, it's imperative that we all have a safe space in our community, society and world. Again, I am humbled by this award as I am simply doing the work that my faith calls me to do. Thank you.
Honorees is the owners of the place you're standing in right now. These folks, this husband and wife duo has been giving back to this community for a long time. They had an opportunity to open up this space and give back, they've been great. If you need a space, please support black owned business, this is a black owned business. We really appreciate them for all the work they've been doing.
Good evening, how's everyone?
Good.
Yeah, where's Bill? So, I can't tell you how great of an honor it is to be recognized tonight for the work we've done over the years. You know, I have a love for the arts, I have a love for Black people and it kind of merged together in image nation. And over the years, you know, from the very beginning, we've been out here doing the work and seeking support and the one person who's has supported us at every level has been Bill Perkins. And so, he funded us as a council member. When he stopped being a council member, he introduced us to Inez Dickens to make sure the relationship continued and now he's back in our space and at every opportunity, they supported this venue. So, I wanna thank Bill Perkins for his support over the years. Sometimes it feels lonely out there when you're doing the work, but because of him, we've always felt like we're doing the right thing.
Thank you, I just wanna introduce everybody to VIP, but if I don't introduce this person, I may get fired. I want you to give a warm welcome to Pamela Green Perkins, Councilman Perkins White. Give her an applause. Thank you guys. We have Manny come up, we have one more award, then we gonna have someone come up. Lloyd Williams just came into the building, give Lloyd a round of applause.
Lloyd Williams came right on time for this award because this award, this award celebrates a group of Black and Latino entrepreneurs in Harlem who got together and banded together to support each other in some concrete ways and help each other survive. And they've done that for the past year and have had a great amount of success and Richard Pelsa is the founder of that group and him and some of his people here, but me and Keith and the committee said to them, "What's your connection with Councilman Perkins? Why do y'all support him so much?" And they said, "Look, it's very clear, we're business people and Bill Perkins is experienced. We don't have time to be sending people to the council to figure out how to get this done, to go to the council orientation class. We need to send somebody who's gonna go and know what they gonna do from day one cuz we're business people, time is money." So, they said, "That's why we endorse Bill Perkins." So, with that said, I'd like to bring up Richard Pelsa and the rest of the founders who is here, Harlem 2020 NYC.
Carmen, John Mars. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for this wonderful opportunity. First thing I just wanna actually say is, Bill Perkins is my man, let me tell you, there's Support small business, support small business, submit, support small business. Harlem right now is an amazing space to be. I'm originally from Cleveland, Ohio, moved to Harlem in 1996. I had a wonderful opportunity to work with some amazing people and as an entrepreneur for the past 20 years, it's very difficult and hard. As business owners here, you know that you really need support, the idea is to keep the lights on. Where do I get this additional support? And Harlem 2020 is an organization where we have the resources that we would be able to reach out and understand that folks who understand how to apply for a grant, how and who and what does it look like to actually work with the city and the state and the government. It's very difficult and hard, especially for young entrepreneurs. So, again, I really want to stress, support small business. And Bill Perkins, if he knows it or not, I see him walking down the street all the time. I'm on Frederick Douglass, I work with Harlem Skin and Laser Clinic, I work with a number of different organizations on that corridor and I see him walking by and supporting and waving, I think it's really important. So, the people behind me are a part of this, this organization, Harlem 2020, which in the next four years, Harlem will be celebrating what, 100, almost 100 years and our initiative really is to work together to actually create jobs for folks in our community and our commitment and our mission right now is to find 20 businesses that, that exist or create working opportunities. So, with all of the other institutions that are, that are here that support us, we actually meet once a month, we collaborate, we're also gonna be in the park, so some of our filmmakers, if you actually go, the film 90 Days is one of our films. So, again, support small business, especially locally.
Thank you, thank you so much. So, the next person is not an honoree, obviously, but he's been honored in this community for a very long time. He's a staunch supporter of Bill, they call each other brothers. This guy has walked 150 miles to Albany to support our children, he's running for state senate. Let's give it up for our friend, our brother, Bob Jackson.
Hey, everyone, thank you, thank you all for coming tonight in order to support Bill and his quest to be reelected again. As you know, he was elected before, reelected again in his primary, then in November as the state, I was gonna say state senator, the state senator now, city council member representing the 9th councilmatic district. And I say to you that my relationship with Bill goes a long way back. In fact, when I first ran for the city council in 2001 and I went into the city council, Bill Perkins was already there. And so, we clearly bonded together like this as brothers, understanding that I represented the 7th councilmatic district, which includes part of Harlem, but a lot of Washington tonight. And Bill and I went everywhere together, all the functions and, and ceremonies and in fact, I had the car, so Bill rode with me. But Bill will show you in a minute his Vetro card and he clearly, as the previous speaker said, you see Bill walking all the way around Harlem and in fact, he's on public transportation, talking to people in the subway, talking to people on the buses and so clearly, he's here, he hears all of the issues and concerns that impact our community. And if you don't know about Bill, he's run about a dozen or so New York City marathons. And I say to you that when somebody says, "Oh, you've run 26 miles," uh-uh, 26.2. Don't forget the point two because a lot of people don't make the point two. We've seen people drop on the ground and have to be picked up and walked across the finish line, let me say that to you. And if you know anything about a marathon runner, Bill is in it for the long haul and he is not for himself. It's not about Bill, this is about our community because clearly, all of the issues concerned that impact with the gentrification, with, with, you know, people not being able to afford the rents, it's extremely important that we have somebody in here that knows what to do. And someone talked about the experience that he had, if many of you don't know, that back in 2002, when we were in the city council, we tried our best to get Bill to be the speaker of the city council of New York. But, you know, convincing some people, you know, especially some people that look like us, that don't wanna try to come together like a lot of other people do and I say to you, that Bill was the deputy majority leader of the city council and he put together a team, I was on his team along with Bill de Blasio, Simka Felder, Charles Baron, Margarita Lopez. And one thing he did, when we knew that we were not going to get that speakership, he said to us, "Don't worry, I stand with you, I'm not gonna abandon you, you are my brother and sister." And he stood with us all the way. And I say to you that Bill has basically walked the walk and talked the talk, but this sign says it all, a strong voice, we can trust, to stand up and speak for our community. And so, ladies and gents, let me introduce you to your brother, our friend, the next city council member as far as reelected, city council member, I'm sure you're calling him state senator, city council member, Big Ben Bill Perkins.
Give it up for Bill.
Very good, outstanding introduction. Give Bob, give Bob a round of applause, please, cuz, you know, Big Ben, Bob Jackson, has been there, done that and he's still around to do some more damage. And I, I, I really love him, he's my brother, we run together literally several so-called marathons, as well as we run together in terms of the political world. And so, I've been honored to have the relationship with him. He's a true spirit, a true brother, who loves this neighborhood, loves the work that we get a chance to do in this neighborhood and I, I can't say enough about the treasure that he has been for me. So, we're back and we're happy to be back on the local level primarily for two big reasons. A, we are always visible or available by comparison to being in Albany. Albany's great, I would never put Albany down, but I'm just saying, I'm much more comfortable being able to on a daily basis, meet and greet, sometimes encounter my constituents, but I'd rather encounter them than disappear from them because, because I believe we're all trying to do the right thing and if I'm wrong, I get the opportunity to be corrected. If I'm right, I get the opportunity to show why. And I think that's the nature of the negotiation, of the arrangement that we have between ourselves and the community. So, I don't duck and I don't hide and I may not always agree, but I try to be straight ahead with what I think is the right thing to do. And I can't thank you enough for your criticisms when they come, whether I appreciate them or not, and I ask you to continue to be as active as you've been in this community and continue to reach out to this office, not just me, cuz one elected official does not make an office. You understand, you might make an election if you're lucky, but when it comes to serving the neighborhood, I have an outstanding staff, some of whom are here, would you please come forward? Both of you who are left, just you? Okay, guess the others took the day off. But, but I have a wonderful staff and I wanna always give appreciation to them, they're not as paid as well as I wish they could be considering the amount of work that they contribute. Give them a round of applause and, and send a check. In any case, thank you so much for, for being here today and joining us in honoring so many folks active in our neighborhood, sometimes unsung, unappreciated. We wanna make sure, with the little bit of time we have to serve, that as many people that we can acknowledge for their service, we wanna make sure that that's done on our watch because that's our responsibility. So, thank you very much.
Give our councilman another round of applause. Give our honorees a round of applause. Yes, our honorees, doing great work in this community. So, briefly before we let you go and have another So briefly, before we let you go and have another glass of wine, I wanna bring up the campaign manager. I know everybody probably think I am, but Richie is the campaign manager. I do the ground stuff. To give you an update on what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. As Keith mentioned earlier, the last six weeks have been about petitions. Keith, the community leaders, the district leaders around the district have brought back more than 8,000 signatures. You only need 450, so we, 20 times what you need, showing great community support. We now move into the next phase, and it's about being active in the community, people seeing us, getting our literature out, getting our message out. So people who wanna come in, our headquarters is one block down on, uh, Adam Clay's House, 120th and Adam Clay Powell. Come in, Keith is there, I'm there. We have people who like to be inside, make phone calls, people who like to be outside, heading out stuff, people who wanna work on data and other stuff. There's all kinds of stuff to do, because this campaign is gonna win, and Bill Perkins' campaigns have won because they're, they're built on grassroots support. Built on the community coming together to improve the community. And that's what this campaign's about, and that's what we're, we're building here, and so it's not just winning in September, being elected in November, but it's building a movement that could stand up to what Donald Trump is doing in the country, and it can stand up for the community. So I thank everybody for being here, looking forward to seeing you in the campaign, and thank you, thank you very much.
I just wanna introduce one last person, probably the most important person in this room, John Lish, John Lynch, you can probably attest to this, but the most important person in this room, if you haven't given something, is Andrea, Andrea Wade. She's Bill Perkins treasurer. So if you haven't given $10 or $5 or something, please see Andrea before you leave. We need as much money as possible. She's gonna make sure your money gets taken care of very well. Thank you so much, and have a great night, guys. One last thing, I'm sorry, this is, this is important, I'm sorry. I just wanna thank the Hope Awards Committee, Manny, Andrew, others, Don, LaShawn, everybody who came together to make this happen, thank you so much.